Stand and try to plan. Like the super fly. I mean, I see. When you three all like for which is panels. But I made remember that it is. But we didn't think of the world. I can tell no, and I'm going to be sitting in for a major pain. Uh, unable with them when I. And um. We'll go around and and make introductions of the first with the staff. I had the main table and then go as the rest of the city and county staff running. Outside of the institution itself, I appreciate that as well. Roger, if you want to start.
I'm Roger Bald, some of the chief administrative officer for the county.
Tim Burton, city manager, city government.
Tom Ralph, county commissioner.
Andy Hunt, county. In Sherwood, city.
And I'm just at the. I didn't know the seating chair, so that pusher to United Way.
County staff wants us. We want to start down here and work back around. This way, go go power to black lights.
So I'm Ray Forseth, it was Saint Peter's Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator.
Um, I'm Kyle Strigel, Simon Emergency Manager for Lewis Clark County. I have Fred Sargerson, Lewis Clark Public Health.
Um, Michael O'Neil, Hailing Housing Authority.
Ruth, with the whole of his.
Um, Stephanie Grant, just on this.
Uh, Chris Frank to.
Jason's Andrew Helm, this one.
That those uh.
Fred Hornwell, Seattle County.
Dan, uh, City Housing Coordinator.
We've got all the staff, staff here and that. And I think we we. We're going to note that Commissioner Payne is not an attendance from the county and Mayor Collins is not in terms from from the city. Uh, we want to uh. We're right ahead to any question about minutes from the previous meeting. Any questions, any comment, they go correct. But being done. The meeting finished on October seventh will be deemed accepted. We have a presentation at. The community organization. Acting in disaster co-ed activation. And would you like to uh? Make your presenting.
Thank you very much to both of the commissions. Uh, we have here with us today, the Tri-County Coed. As Commissioner said, it's the community organizations active in disaster. Coed represents organizations that contribute to the response to and recovery from emergencies and disasters in our area. In addition to the coed, we also have of us today on Zoom Emily Fraser, she's the executive director of the Helena area community foundation. Um, to discuss one of her city projects as well. Um, so if it's okay with commissioners, I'd like to hand it over now to Doug Wheeler, he is the Chair of the Coed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Anna. So, uh, the Tri-County Coed is a group of nonprofits, faith-based organizations and others who coordinate. And respond to disasters and other emergencies in in the local area. Uh, we, when we do that, we provide uh human services to those impacted by those emergencies or disasters. Uh, we, we actually uh serve the Lewson Clark, Broadwater County and Jefferson County. Uh, we meet on a monthly basis. And uh, so how we're activated. Typically, we're activated by the Lewson Clark County Emergency Manager, who's. Kyle here. And um. There is occasions where we will self-activate if if a situation warrants that might not be in the realm of. What an emergency manager, but our services are needed. Uh, some examples of past activations that we've had are um during fires. Uh floods and the pandemic, there's been quite a variety of different things there I could go into if you wanted. Uh. So, we do expect this uh. An upcoming emergency to exist with winter sheltering. Um, and maybe we'll have some people talking a little bit about that. Uh. What I'd like to do is uh take some, take some questions and then out and kind of go around to some of our members, have them talk about. Um, their organization, how they contribute to the coed. And what things would help them uh better respond to emergencies like uh winter sheltering and others.
We would just ask that that anybody speaks to that they would uh. Give their name and if they have a position, it'll explain what it is.
Okay, great. So I don't know, Ray did you?
Oh, wow, put me on the spot. Good afternoon, my name is Ray Forseth, I'm the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for Saint Peter's Health. I'm somewhat new to this position and just beginning this relationship with the coed. But um, we have been working with a lot with the family reunification policy and our pediatric disaster response. And it's been very valuable to Saint Peter's Health, having these resources where I can go through and work with the volunteers and the community to say. When a disaster strikes and the services at Saint Peter's Health are needed. How do we reunite these families and make sure they're getting the most accurate up-to-date information? And that's a challenge with the number of employees we have, we're stretched is what we can provide. So working with the coed has been very valuable for me and my area to ensure that we're giving you the best services possible.
Great, thank you, Anna. All right, um. Sue Mottler, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Commissioners. Doug, people in attendance, my name is Susan Hawthorne, I'm the uh. Our, I always call it R, but it's American Red Cross Disaster Action Team Coordinator for Lewis Clark County. And um, most of us know what the Red Cross does, but for Lewis and Clark, our main priority is sheltering under mass care. And uh, we also provide mass feeding, if needed, mental health and health services while clients are in the shelter. Uh, recovery support. Managing in-kind donations, coordinating with other coed agencies. Uh, with volunteer management and also in-kind donations. Uh, we work closely with the Emergency Operations Center with Kyle and his crew. And communicate with the shelter clients and information regarding anything from the incident commander. We currently don't open shelters for the homelessness population for warming or cooling centers. Um, unfortunately, that's not in our scope. Um, a caveat to that was if God love had an emergency, they had a fire, of course, we would open a shelter because that would be deemed to. You know, their population was staying there at the time. Um, we try to. Make sure that we provide all the resources available and to um make sure that clients are feel safe when they're in our. Uh shelters, we also provide pet sheltering now, as long as the organization that we're using their shelter is fine with that. Most people will not uh shelter if they if their pet can't come with them. Um, the other thing that we're currently trying to make sure that everybody understands is that. The partnership with the coed is important, so we don't duplicate our resources. Uh, when we're providing. Uh, care and uh recovery efforts to individuals that are in the client or even seeking help. So somebody may decide they don't want to come into a shelter, but they have an RB. So they also would receive our services as well. So we not specifically say, if you're not staying in a shelter, you won't receive those helps, you will. Uh, let's see what else. Uh, again, we're just trying to work uh together to receive, everybody have timeless um. Support so that there's no miscommunication or individuals that are getting upset because they're waiting for something and it's not being provided. Uh, my boss lives in Cascade, Montana, and all of our resources would then come out of Great Falls if we need. Uh, we have a trailer that's located with uh fifty uh cots and one hundred um. Blankets, also with comfort kits or toothbrush, toothpaste, all that, so if you're displaced. We also have another storage unit that also contains the same amount of that, so if we needed to provide more, we could. Also, it's just a phone call away up in Great Falls if we needed to get information or supplies or any of that down, so any questions?
Probably wait.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Uh, Phil McGovern Salvation Army.
Uh, Phil McGovern, Athletics and Emergency Services Director for the Helena Corps of the Salvation Army. Um, we provide services in along with food and food uh preparation, food delivery, food dispersment. In the event of an emergency or disaster to first responders and then we move on from that, we work with the Red Cross to let us know what else is needed. Um, but if first responders are going to be there longer than a twenty-four hour period, then somebody, the incident commander usually will let us know that. We need food starting at this time, et cetera, and so we would do that, we coordinate ourselves as the Latter Day Saints volunteers. Um, with anybody that wants to help get our food preparation going. Um, we also have uh depending on the size of of disaster or emergency. We have canteens that are in Great Falls and uh Missoura Canteen Trucks, giant food uh uh food trucks that we were able to bring. Um, on another level, we are able to help with donations and fundraising services, volunteers and volunteer management. Um. And then we have also, we have cleanup stuff that we have, we're able to give to the public. Um, for cleanup after fires or after floods or or. Too much snow. So.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, um, I know we have a few virtual people. Um, Emily McVay, United Way.
Hello. Uh, sorry, I can't be there with you today, I'm here celebrating my son's birthday in Kalispell, so. Good.
We're not hearing you.
Oh. They can't hear me.
I can hear you, Emily, so it might be something in the room.
Yeah, or. Not sure, let me try to.
Can you hear me now? I'm trying all my options here. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, Emily.
I said, the online people. How about now? Trying every. How about now?
That seem to be getting anything.
Okay, I'm trying all of the, they can hear me online, but they can't hear me in the room.
Hi, I'm Liz Flynn from Florence, Clinton, um, and we have a number of residential programs. With a youth maternity home for teen mums and babies. Um, a recovery treatment program for women and children and a transitional living program for women and children. Um, I'm really here to tell you. That we're not an emergency placement, we have a lot of little babies in our program, so we do require a mental health evaluation. And a chemical dependency evaluation, provided all those things can be done, which we can help with in-house. Um, we can get a pretty rapid intake if we have a bed available, but we can't um kind of be at the end of the. Phone if there was an emergency and just say, yes, bring them down right now. We just really do need to be careful about um the safety of our current clients. Um, we have um six home visitors. Uh, visiting families throughout the community, connecting them to resources, uh, they could certainly go visit people in a Red Cross shelter. Um, or in the library or any one of your programs, um, they're really great at helping access services around town, um. Just connecting parents that need help in whatever shape or form that they need.
Excellent.
Yes.
I wonder if we have can hear Emily Fraser. Or is it all of them, we can't hear?
I can try to speak, can you hear me? I'm pretty sure it's an issue in the room.
Yeah, I think that you can't hear anyone.
In the room.
We have anybody else?
Have anybody else that wanted to speak for coed? Would love to get Emily on.
Well, they're working on that, maybe we did have a couple of questions, uh, make sure we do.
Yeah. Check it out, work, uh, can you give an example of a self-activate? A situation, situation in which you did self-activate for.
Sure, I think a, a good example would be the Iron Front Fire. Um, if you guys are familiar with that, um, it wasn't really at an emergency manager level, but there were people. Uh, needing, you know, needing. So. And then, so what we did is um, we actually set up a fund to help support the people that were displaced by that.
All right, uh, and Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed, do you have a?
I did, I had a question for the American Red Cross representative. Uh, I think I've heard you say that. It is you could not uh help with unhoused people, but if it was parts of an emergency plan. Triggered by weather, would that change that and would you be able to? Provide shelter and your resources for people who were impacted by weather regardless of their housing status or not?
So we would not unless they were staying at God's love and that the electricity went off, then yeah, then we could. Um, but. Within our volunteers, if. We're trying to plan in the coed, how we're gonna work with the homelessness population for cooling or warming centers. Um, we also have volunteers who would like to continue volunteer that direction, they get just can't do it under the Red Cross aspect.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Commissioner, I'm the chairman, thank you, uh, Representatives for the Red Cross, thank you for being here, a question for you, uh. How does the guest, and also for you too, Scott, is the communication, self-activation or radio activation? Who coordinates the the communication between the two? And what's the chain of command, I guess, with how that all works?
Sure, uh, typically, like what's going to happen is Kyle, current, you know, emergency manager would contact me. And then I would contact the entire organization via email, however, I do phone calls for the people most um. Most important in that particular situation to make sure that we get a quick response.
Other questions? That we've got?
Now, I guess I can uh talk about my organization, I happen to be, I'm the chair, but also uh uh representing the Helena area scouting. So, um, what we provide is typically. Um, labor, volunteer labor. Uh, like sandbag filling, collecting water, firefighters, things like that. Uh, I think like higher end, like um some of the higher-end services that these other organizations can provide.
Like we're still, we're still waiting there, are there other questions that? That people have?
I can caveat on the uh. The call down on the evacuations or notifications. Um, I will sometimes just get a call from uh the emergency manager to let me know, I need a shelter right now, I mean, it's. What we looked at has now escalated to another level and that doesn't have to go through the coed, it can just be uh between calling myself. Uh, so there's no time lapse or anything like that, so if it's in needing of a shelter immediately, we can do that. Also, if it's an apartment fire, I know that the fire department will um automatically call me up. And say, hey, we've got a, whatever, it's an apartment fire, whatever, uh Kyle. Might not know it's two AM, but uh I work. Very closely with the law enforcement and first responders here. So that we can go ahead and if a shelter is needed for a big uh apartment complex, as we're seeing more and more uh in Helena and throughout the. The uh community, these, these buildings are starting to be a little bit bigger. So a small apartment of twelve people wouldn't be that big, but one with maybe a hundred people in it, um, that's going to be a a. At scale disaster.
A few things that we almost always activate, not every time, but donations, uh management. During a fire or something like a flood, a lot of people want to help and. We try to coordinate that and we have actually Emily McVay with.
Can you hear me, Doug?
Donation, uh kind of manager coordinator. Um, we don't want to get a whole bunch of things that people are very. Um, very generous, but there may not be things that we actually need. And or not us personally, but the recipients, uh, so. Emily works on that end as far as trying to make sure that. We have other organizations and individuals knowing what's needed and where to get it to. So that we cannot duplicate those types of services as well. Um, in addition, volunteer uh management is a big um part. Like especially like say that the pandemic was a great example of that. We needed a ton of volunteers for doing traffic control out at the. Uh, out at the fairgrounds for um doing the vaccination clinics. And Emily uh coordinated that and we had probably, I think it was over a hundred, maybe two hundred people that were signed up, so. Um, if you didn't have someone do that, you're going to end up with a whole bunch of people not knowing what's going on or how to help, so. That's another thing that we try to do and and keep things uh coordinated.
All right.
Uh, I thought you were.
And did you have some more folks and maybe those are on?
I think, I think that's it, unless.
I had asked. Thank you for for the, for this, and we'll get it as soon as we can get them hooked up. But I, I had asked uh Roger Balls to uh. A, a little background. Of some of the things the county is committed to doing. Uh, would you just run down that to the, those that we. Put in our budget that we work on for emergencies.
Yes. I will certainly do that, Commissioner, and I'll. I made ten copies of this, Commissioner Rolf and I spoke about this earlier today. Thank you, Tim. Maybe you could just consider this for information, uh, every year we update this. With pandemic. The coed members stepped up in a huge way to help us in many ways. And um, a few years ago, we also had a a large ice storm. I'm remembering that as well, too. And in all of those cases, the county commissioners went through a process of declaring a state of emergency. And uh, there's been many other events as well, too, but those three kind of stand out, so I just wanted to say. Thank you for everything you do and how much help you give us around here. Um, what the county does every year is we try to build capacity. Uh, with the nonprofits when and where we can. And provide funding that's been approved by the commissioners. So um. We've uh been working on a number of issues, what's been passed out is uh a summary of some of the funding that the county provides. That uh we call for populations at risk. For indigent folks in our community. Uh, without going through all the details, uh, it amounts to uh well over two and a half million dollars in various funding. Uh, uh, on the first page. Uh, is the Human Services Task Force funding. So the county commissioners approve this every year. And um, you'll see for this fiscal year that we're in right now, which is called Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Six. Um, I'll just give you a sample of some of them. God's Love Shelter, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars has been allocated for this year. For Pure View Healthcare, for uh. Homeless or people who do not have health insurance, we've allocated two hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. I checked with uh our employee Misty Edwards, who handles a lot of this for us, and she let me know that since September. There's been one thousand nine hundred people who have been assisted at Pure View, which I thought was an impressive number. Um. Thirty, a little over thirty-six thousand dollars to the Friendship Center, a little over seven thousand dollars to Florence Crittenan. A little over seven thousand dollars to Helena Food Share, seventy-five hundred dollars to the YWCA, seventy-five hundred dollars to Family Promise. Um, as you go through this list, everyone, you'll also see. Kind of what jumps out to me is that um the county does provide one hundred thousand dollars this fiscal year to the Our Place Drop-In Center. Um, we also fund behavioral healthcare services out of the detention center through our Criminal Justice Services Program. You can see the number there is a little over eight hundred thousand dollars for all the staffing that's tied to that. Um. The Journey Home Building that the county used to own has been sold to many rivers. Um, we hope that they will get that up and running soon. Uh, we've authorized a sub-recipient grant to them once they open the doors of a little over three hundred thousand dollars. There's also something called uh opioid settlement monies that have been coming into the county. And the county commissioners have allocated a little over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars through that program. You'll see that on the third page of this handout. Um. There's also many programs out of the Health Department that are funded, they're on the list here as well, too. And uh, in Fiscal Year Twenty-Five, the commissioners. Uh, authorized five hundred thousand dollars to the Food Share Project Funding for their big project over there. Five hundred thousand dollars in funding was provided for Habitat Free Humanity for some funding over there as well, too. Again, that's last year. And uh, also six hundred thousand dollars to Florence Crittenan, so this is just a list to give you an idea of some of the things that are going on. Uh, it's not specific to sheltering uh or winter uh sheltering related issues in particular. But uh, Commissioner Rolf, you asked us to make a copy of this and be prepared to hand it out today, so that's it. So I'll close, by the way I started. Is there anything else I could help answer?
Maybe some questions, yeah, yes, Commissioner Reed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, question not related to the information, which thank you for that, but. I guess I'm a little confused, are we talking about the plan at all that we saw at the other meeting that had not been noticed, or are we not doing?
Uh, I was only asked to. The, the, we said the city had. Requested that the coed be on there, that was the only item that we asked, had been asked by either the city or the county, said.
I guess I thought that this was when we were going to talk about the plan that we had seen at the prior meeting that had not been noticed. But now I'm, I appreciate all the information about the coed is great, but so we're not talking about that draft plan.
No, not to my knowledge, it was not, it was not requested by either the city or the county.
I believe Emily was going to speak on that, but she's had some difficulties.
Can you guys hear me now?
I just suggestion, and I'm sure you have her phone number, you can put her on speaker right now, we can probably hear. That might be a way to do it, Emily Fraser as well, so we could get her on. Just a suggestion, it'd be pretty simple, you could see it on the screen and she could talk on her phone.
Hello. Hi, Emily. I've got some friends here who would like to hear from you.
I have tried being, it's nothing I can to get on.
Well, they're still working on it here. Uh, go ahead and probably if you'll backtrack just for a moment and. Uh, explain a little more about United Way's part in uh the coed work.
So I'm sorry I couldn't be there. I'm gonna turn off my Zoom, see if that helps. Okay. I can't tell if that's working better or not.
It is.
Okay, so. Our volunteer site, Volunteer Helena, to help coordinate volunteers. We have the ability to email everybody on that site when there is an emergency, uh, to get volunteers activated during an emergency. So there's, there's about thirteen hundred people, uh, signed up for that right now. Um, I also work with the Public Information Officers from both the city and the county during emergencies so that, um, I can share information out to the community through the Tri-County Coed, uh, Facebook page. And because the staff are so busy, they're often just throwing information at me. I put it together on a flyer and then I put it out and everybody shares it around once it's approved. And then as things change, we update that and then we all just keep sharing that same information. It's just a resource we can provide when we know that all of the city and county staff are really engaged in the actual emergency. As far as the housing conversation, we are building a policy for the co-ed right now to talk about how we would implement a shelter in the winter. And so that is the, that is the topic that the co-ed is working on right now is building this policy. We have had several meetings since we were, uh, with you guys last month. We have been, um, discussing with churches, the recruitment of space that would, they would then go through the process of developing the policy specifically for their space, meeting with the city staff around fire codes and city codes, looking at their insurance policies, um, and recruiting volunteers and then discussing how the co-ed could backfill some of those needs if the church can't feed people or if they don't have the supplies. Uh, we've been working with the Red Cross on that policy because they already do that. They're the experts in that area, also working with them on the supplies that we would need for a shelter. So we could have what Sue has, like a grab and go kit, um, that we would be able to grab cots and blankets and toiletry bags and have them ready to go for an emergency shelter if the weather gets so bad. So we've been working on all of those steps to get, um, the co-ed ready to activate if we needed to, if there was a weather emergency. Uh, in the long run, we need to talk about a more permanent solution, but right now that's, that's been our conversation with the co-ed team.
Thank you, are there questions for, for Emily?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes.
Maybe, thanks Emily for that explanation, that was helpful. Um, so I'm wondering at what point does, and maybe this, I don't know if this is a question for Emily or Kyle, but at what point do the commissions get brought in for, I mean, is this something that we update our emergency plans or it's just the co-ed internal policies for this kind of activation?
Emily, do you want me to?
I was gonna say that might be a better answer, a question for Kyle, but I did forget one thing. We do have a fund that Emily Fraser holds at the Helena Area Community Foundation that we have used for emergencies in the past. And then United Way has a little tiny fund that we hold. They're both co-ed funds and, um, we have tapped into those for a variety of different kinds of emergencies. The funds that we hold at United Way are more for training purposes and the funds that Emily Fraser holds are more for the active emergencies. Sorry, I forgot that, but Kyle, you'd be better to answer that question.
Yeah, um, Kyle Sturgill Simon Emergency Manager. So there's, there's legal definitions for emergencies and disasters and mostly it's imminent likelihood of damage to life and property at a, at a large scale. And so, uh, when we start hearing reports from any of our partners of, um, life limits at stake or property being damaged, that's when we begin that conversation about what response may be necessary. Uh, co-ed isn't held to that same legal standard for what emergency is. And so they can self-activate and work towards things or they may ask for assistance with, um, individual or small aspects to it before it gets to a full-blown emergency declaration.
And then on the question about the, I guess the policy piece, so for, uh, the purposes of this conversation, um, I guess does, do you believe that, um, whether, um, emergencies for folks who are on shelter meets that definition of an emergency from the, um, like county legal perspective?
So for our program for emergency management, we rely on what is asked of us. And so, um, if an incident commander is on scene working something and asks for assistance, and that sort of initiates that whole process. Emergency management doesn't initiate a, a incident per se. Uh, we come in once it's, it's been established that there's a need. And that might be a community partner, it might be a department or it might be a, a local jurisdiction having authority.
Okay, and so then that's why the co-ed is developing these additional internal policies to be able to help where maybe there's not an incident commander that says this is an emergency in a legal definition. Maybe for Emily or Kyle.
Uh, Commissioner Dean, are you asking potentially is the co-ed developing a policy? And then does that require the commission to, to either adopt or accept their policy? That's a good question. Just one clarification, thank you.
No, that's all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dean, one of the, one of the fun things about my job is that we get to work with a lot of different organizations' policies. And so they're not always the same. And, um, basically we go off of the ask. Um, when somebody identifies that there's an issue, uh, we receive either a resource request or a request for assistance. And then we talk to all of our partners about whether or not it can be provided. And, uh, we kind of are the, the, the middleman for a little while until it reaches that level that we can prove that there's, um, imminent likelihood of damage to lives and property or, or those damages are taking place.
Thanks.
Are there other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Reed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
County policy, I remember someone holding a piece of paper and it sounded like a thing we were looking to revise, but I don't know, was that ours, was that somebody else's, could you help me recall?
Uh, sure, Commissioner, sure. And we can, um, activate various different resources and apply governmental resource.
That was prompted, uh, by, uh, our local setting has relied heavily on God's love to take people in. And, uh, with the news that they will not be doing that, they will not be acting as a, uh, low-barrier shelter, uh, it prompted, uh, us to begin to look at what might be optional ways to handle this, um, this emergency.
Sorry to find that, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead Commissioner.
Us and we, that policy would have governed whom?
Uh, that policy was a sample, a, a, a model policy used in other communities. I think, Emily, help me where we harvested it from, borrowed it from another community and adapted it to our local setting.
Yeah, the original, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the original policy that we brought last month was really short, uh, just kind of to the point about what we would need. We have since found another policy manual that is a, a chunk of a book, um, that we have been revising. It has every detail that you would need to know about starting a shelter. So that's, we've, we've pivoted to using that one. It, it's a policy out of Washington County, Oregon. They have multiple locations that they use when they implement emergency sheltering. So, um, that policy is still in the works and that would be the one that we would sit down with each individual location and, um, create that policy around that location, their capacity, their needs. So it's, it's in draft and it will be based on each individual site that could potentially help us during the winter.
Are there other questions yet, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, so I guess this is back to Emily or the, the whole gang here. Um, what I'm concerned about and what I understand is that we have a lack of capacity for this low-barrier shelter. So what I'm hearing you say Emily is that this community coalition is attempting to identify potential spaces for this low-barrier sheltering and policies around that. And then there may be, uh, resources when, when needed to help build that capacity or activate that capacity. And, uh, obviously the co-ed would, would jump in if they see it, uh, fits their criteria. And in the sense that, uh, this group is working on these topics and there may be capacity identified as well as resources to activate that capacity when it's time, when it's needed?
Yes, both, I'll share a piece and let Emily share a piece. Uh, last week we held, uh, some meetings with various faith communities and about four or five, uh, one initially said, we were gonna do this with or without your blessing. Uh, but, uh, but there are a handful of churches who are exploring, uh, that interest. In fact, uh, go ahead, I can't remember who's putting on the training. We're doing a training, uh, Red Cross is providing shelter establishment training, uh, this Friday and Saturday uh, for, uh, those, uh, faith, faith, uh, communities who are interested in providing shelter. Um, and that may not cover everybody, but we, we can offer that again in the future as needed. So yes, we are recruiting, uh, volunteer sites, uh, offering them this, uh, twenty-eight page document that Emily alluded to, uh, how to set up a shelter, uh, what you need to think through, um, in that process. So we have begun that process of recruiting potential sites. Uh, Emily, what can you say about how that group, uh, will then interact with the co-ed?
Yeah, we will, we are going to develop that, um, how we know when to call it a shelter. So we'll work with the, uh, National Weather Service. The other thing that we're doing in the next couple of weeks is holding a tabletop exercise. Uh, we do this frequently for fires and floods and we bring as many people in. Those policies as part of that tabletop. Um, the other thing that we've been working on is creating a list of all of the current housing, shelters, transitional living facilities, nursing homes, apartment buildings, anything that houses people, we've been making that list. Housing options on that list and there are only two of them that have openings. And so that will limit us, but at least we will know what all the other resources are if we have a person that comes. If we have a family that comes, maybe we can refer them to God's love or Family Promise instead of the shelter. So really, um, getting a comprehensive look at what our community has to offer, which we do have a great community that offers a lot of things. The problem right now is everybody's at capacity and, um, you know, it's okay.
I don't want to, it's not my attempt to just, my attempt is to get some clarity. So this process that you have begun, um, the, the city and county and our role, it, imagine, and I'm not committing to anything, but imagine that, uh, we could, I think we're already at the table, Kyle's there, others will help, but what, what do you need from us? I mean, what are you asking for? What do you, it sounds like you're building capacity, you're identifying sites. Emily Fraser's got some funding that could help with the implementation of the sites. Co-ed is in existence and we support co-ed through with Kyle and, and others. What can, what do we, what do you need from the city and the county?
At some point, we might be asking for space, um, if we can't get enough other locations. If there, you know, we might ask if the city had, or the county has anything we could potentially use. You know, depending on the weather situation, how many people we need to house, um, that could be an ask. Uh, we, we know that we need to work with the city fire and the city code, building code staff. Um, so, you know, making sure that we're all working on, you know, what's the, what's the safest? How do we make this work? Uh, you know, just working together on those things. Uh, you know, we've got a lot of people looking into how they keep their facilities safe, having twenty-four staff on board, so making sure we're following all the protocols that are necessary. So, you know, it'd be an ask of time from the city staff to help us make sure we're doing the right things and that we meet all their requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, I think this might be something for our commissions respectively to take back, but I'd love to see if there's an opportunity for us to not, um, I'm trying. I don't wanna have to wait for us for ad hoc asks for things and to see if there is an opportunity for us to affirm that the respective commissions stand ready to provide whatever is needed to help along this process. I'm not sure I'm saying it right, but, you know, instead of waiting for someone to tell us they need staff time, if there is an opportunity for us to say that we will work with the co-ed and other organizations in order to facilitate, um, the provision of emergency shelter in the case of a weather emergency. Um, and again, this seems like individual commissions might have to do that and then we coordinate. But it, it feels like this is, you know, it's November fourth, it's cold. Uh, this is gonna take a while. Instead of waiting until we hit a bottleneck.
Okay, are there other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dean.
Emily, speaking to your comments on, um, working with city staff on building code and fire codes, have you all, um, reached out to those staff yet?
Not yet. Uh, I, I've also, uh, shared this information with our friends in East Helena. Uh, I know that the co-ed covers East Helena, but they wanted to be sure that whatever we did, they were at least mirroring or being a part of that so that, again, in the event of a weather emergency, uh, they would be on the same page with us, so.
Chair, I think.
Commissioner, have it.
I, if I'm not mistaken, Emily Fraser might have been gonna share something with us as well, is that correct? Am I, okay, and somebody's got her on the phone or somebody, you got?
I know, I have her on the phone, somebody.
Yeah.
Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Emily did give me a number we could call when it's her turn to talk.
I just didn't want us to close the meeting without bringing that up.
Does she want to say something?
Yes.
Would somebody give her a call and let's hear what she has to say?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, hello.
Perfect, and I've turned off the volume so I hopefully aren't getting that going. I can still see you. Give me a wave if you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Marvelous. And I apologize, the sound has been cutting out, so I may have missed some details here and there. But I know that part of what I was invited to, for one, it would verify that the Helena Community Foundation is a part of the co-ed. We generally take on the role of providing fundraising websites and distributing funds. That's the area in which we can provide assistance. We're small staff, we're not case managers, we're not into direct service, but we can get a website together and can hopefully bring people together in that realm. And so we do have funding from that, that is the co-ed. So can verify that. As far as the project that we had recently approved, losing it over six, just to say. About two years ago, funding was aside with the Hope for Community, something that I think would take on the essence of a warming shelter or a low barrier housing scenario. And that funding, I know that the city had multiple meetings over a two-year period and that funding had not yet found a home. When we suggested a capacity building program specifically to work with nonprofits who provides services to the unhoused. We are not housing experts. I will say I have gotten quite a primer in the last couple of months as we've been looking at this and I've learned quite a bit. More aware and frankly more concerned about the situation that faces us in Helena than I was previously. But our plan is meant to be a multi-phase approach where we're going to start by working with nonprofits to assess their readiness and capacity, build a cohort of probably five nonprofits to do deep dive work on to help improve capacity and scaling and infrastructure. And then at that point to invest some of the funding and hopefully more that we've raised along the way in solutions that can improve that scenario in our community. I think the thing that's happened that drastically changed the dynamics here is this was an issue going forward. We knew this was an issue. We know this has been an issue for years, but we do not have a strong emergency sheltering situation. It's simply had God's love change their policy for this year. I can think of a much more real sense of urgency and exacerbated a problem that exists. And so we are proceeding with our program as planned. We currently have a steering committee together that will be meeting tomorrow. We are planning our assessments. And I still think that in the long-term scheme of things, this could provide very helpful services to the community, but it's not going to answer the question of where does somebody sleep tomorrow. And so I think seeing that in the community and seeing the urgency behind that in the community is, there's reasons for that to be pressing. I might encourage, again, being an expert in housing, I know that there is civic funding that is being used in a lot of these places. I don't know if any of that is intended to be for emergency low barrier shelters, but I think that we have some, it's a very serious situation if one nonprofit changing one policy means that people freeze to death in Helena. And so I just think that we all are probably together and not wanting to see that happen. So I would like to, you know, reflect that I see here, I can see this. I'm hopeful that the program we proposed will be long-term helpful to our community. But I would reiterate that it is not necessarily solving the problem in the timeframe that has become the problem.
Now, does anybody have a question that we need to try to resolve at this point?
Chair, just a couple of things to add as I was listening. Just to let you know, we will not have the same shelters as Red Cross shelters. So we have those identified as different. We also have some low on your locations to store supplies once they're identified. We don't necessarily have a spot in co-ed that so we can store and pots and such. Also, most of us are volunteers. I'd like to say like Commissioner, you know, we have Red Cross volunteer. So, or they have volunteers in their agencies. The time is. Being able to call people to say, "Hey, what's your schedule look like?" And would we be able to get volunteers in? So a lot of this is going to replicate the Red Cross sheltering. So there's a lot of that that we already have legally, everything's been looked at. And so we'll just kind of map those forms and such.
It would appear to me that we are waiting for some specific asks. Is that what, does that sound what we're talking about?
Yes, as you can imagine, for an agency, whether it's a nonprofit or a faith community, for them to decide to do this is probably not just a phone call. They need to go through the process, they need to look at the liabilities, look at their own facility. Like you said, 28-page document to go through. Are they going to allow pets? Are they, you know, does it have space for families? How do they secure? Call attention to whatever the emergency is, whatever, and can evacuate the building. So that is the workaround that communities across our nation have found to initiate this kind of emergency procedure.
All right, are there other questions?
No, do you?
I just have one more. So I, I.
I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dean.
Um, I don't know if this is for Tim or Chris Bree, but based on what you've heard today, is there low hanging fruit or things that, feedback that we can give from a staff perspective that would help the co-ed in, I guess, being able to move like more expeditiously as they continue this process?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think that first of all, I really appreciate the work that's taking place. And it's been taking place for a long time. But obviously there is some immediacy to it right now with the unknown out there. Jeff and all these folks, the city of Helena does not have a facility and we don't have a single trained person on staff that can actually provide a service. But we can coordinate on fire code and building code, as you well know, and we stand ready to do that. And I'm not making any commitments here, but if there is a deficit in finance or amount to bring forward for consideration by the commission. And so we know that this is going on, we attend meeting. Similar position Commissioner in that we have to have something to respond to because we're not the experts. We rely on our strategic partners to tell us what they need to provide that service and then we can engage the government body with whatever the information is.
I think that provides some clarity.
Mr. Chairman. I know, I know we have to close her up here, but I just wanted to make one statement. I won't be able to face my good friend Michael O'Neil over here. But one of the big issues is the reality is that we don't have enough housing and we need more portable housing in our community. And so I think the city and county are both engaged in processes to try and foundationally affect that. There's the joint infrastructure study or the investments we've made through our ARPA funds in infrastructure and those kinds of things. So that capacity, when a developer does make those decisions, is there for them to take. Some capacity available right now. And so that is one of the things that we can do and all the partners need to try and identify those folks that might be eligible and get them engaged and make sure that they have applied for those vouchers.
Housing Authority, we've really been focused on getting people housed into permanent housing. Since June 1st, we've housed additional 50 households through our voucher programs. And that we're expecting a big push between now and the end of the calendar year to try to get as many people housed as possible. That's through the increase in, from the fair market rent and payment standards that we're able to actually pay market rents and get people housed. Also the coming online of the Twin Creek 9 and Twin Creek 4 project, which the city has helped support. And that's it all in a, in a, in a unique period of uncertainty on a national level, but we, and uncertainty full speed ahead, you know, we have, but it's so it's really important that we act. And so we're expecting Twin Creek 4 to be wrapping up by the end of the year and hopefully we'll be able to get folks housed there. And they've made a commitment to prioritize voucher holders in there, which means that 75% of those folks are persons with incomes below 30% of median income. And 25% are below 50% of median income. And just to be clear, because sometimes when we talk about homelessness and when we talk about housed, the second we start talking about people being housed, it's like, oh, we're talking about homelessness here. Well, let's keep in mind that about 40% of the folks that we bring into our programs are homeless at the time of entry into those programs. So our, what we're working on is getting people into permanent housing. But the bigger picture, the long-term picture is. Thanks for the, for bringing that up because there's a lot of things, and there's so many people working on things all at the same time. And I think it's not one thing, it's a lot of things are going to make a difference here.
So there is, there is more housing coming online.
There is more housing coming online.
And there is some more opportunity to help bring people into the housing.
There's opportunity today. We have 12 to 14 vouchers that are particularly for people who are chronically homeless, which means they have, they're homeless a certain length of time and have a permanent serious disabling condition. So historically, those usually people with serious disabling, no illness. There's somewhat of a, you know, the one piece, I think we talk a lot about housing here. Services is really a big challenge and the state is really, needs to be at the table and be responsible for making sure that their service systems are functioning. Because that's, that's a big contributor to what's going on in our community.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Michael a quick question.
Certainly.
Can you remind us, Michael, how many units were, will be constructed with Twin Creeks when it's coming?
When they're both done, it'll be 72 units, yeah. But with, with the increase in the payment center, we have a lot of, you know, it's just a lot of work for people. It's the, they have to find the housing and things like that. But the private landlord base that really is stepping up to house people, so.
I can't help but remember back three or four months ago, the head of the Minneapolis Fed was here and made a presentation and he said, ultimately the answer to the price of housing being out of whack is more housing. And I thought that is just exactly what you're saying, confirming that. All right. Now, we, I think we're to the point where we usually wrap up. Is, are there any other questions that need to be brought up on the, on the set?
I just have one question. I know that there's been discussion about a lot of efforts that have been made. In sub-zero temperatures at 3:00 AM, do we have an anticipated date is when we might have something in place? As Commissioner Reed pointed out, it's November 4th. And so with nothing coming, with God's love not being an option, I would like to give our officers some kind of a forecast.
Thank you Officer Zander. In the event there was ever an incident at one of those locations, you would also be on screen dial for us for that. But yes, we will absolutely be in contact with you and get that information out to you. You asked about a date. I'm terribly optimistic and I say December. Emily's much more practical, she says January 1st. It takes time for to get all this lined up, but we are doing the best we can. So that's where we're at sometime soon. Hopefully we have a long, what do we call it, fifth season, a long Indian summer. But we're doing the best we can.
Any, any more, any questions? Well, we're to the point of looking for public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? There being no public comment, meeting's adjourned.